Good evening. Would like to welcome you to the February 2012 Board of Education meeting for Olathe School District 233. Thank you. Ms. Hibbs, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ashley?
Here.
Dr. Daniels?
Here.
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Parker? Mr. Polan? Mr. Shear?
Here.
Thank you. Would you all please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. I would like to offer a personal welcome to Troop 412 and the audience this evening. There you go. I understand you're all working on your citizenship and communications merit badges, so welcome to the board meeting this evening. And we'd like to welcome Scout Master David Boucher.
Bachelor.
Missed that, didn't I? Close, alright. Anyway, welcome. We're glad that you're here, and we're always excited when young citizens come to see how government really works. Thank you very much. This evening, we're going to have some presentations from our staff. The first one would be a presentation in regards to our district energy and recycling efforts, and I believe that a board member had requested this presentation. So, thank you very much, Mr. Hutchison, for presenting this evening and preparing this presentation.
Well, good evening, and I realize I have pretty poor planning when I bring my presentation up in a plastic binder printed versus if we're going to talk about recycling and conservation. Really, districts across the country attack these efforts through three focused approaches. The first one revolves around operations of their buildings. What can they do in the way of energy efficiencies, either through the way they outfit their buildings or through formal energy programs? The second is through maintenance and construction. How do you maintain the building? And then new construction, what technologies can you put into it? And then the third, probably most important one, is individual behavior, just those activities centered around teaching us how to behave better with the environment. All of these focused efforts, studies show that across the district, they save across the nation, they save districts, about 5% to 15% of their energy costs. But you'll see in a moment that Olathe is kind of out of the norm. We've been able to achieve something much greater. In that first leg of the stool, that operations leg or energy conservation, this has been presented to the board before as recent as last May, but our efforts have yielded about $20 million. You can call that savings or cost avoidance, because really, it's not necessarily that you just save because we're growing district, a lot of moving parts. But through the consumption of energy units, we have avoided spending about $20 million in energy. There are some specific projects that the district's endeavored on that have really helped a lot. The first of those is central control systems, and what those are is just a centralized way of controlling all of our heating and cooling systems. We do two different settings. We have an occupied setting, unoccupied. We basically run our buildings seven to four, and then they automatically switch unless a calendar event has been scheduled to that unoccupied zone, so that in the winter, it gets colder in the building, less air exchange, and it conserves on the energy. Another area is our upgraded lighting fixtures. We've been removing a lot of those, what they're called metal halide fixtures, like the big old gym lights. Those get replaced with a more energy-efficient one. As we go retrofitting through our classrooms, remember in the capital outlay discussions, we've talked about replacement cycle of renovating classrooms. When we're in there replacing lighting, much more efficient fixtures with better ballast, or if we repair any kind of light fixture, we replace the ballast to a more energy-efficient one. We have upgraded HVAC equipment, and that really just comes through attrition. Our equipment lasts us about 20 years, so by the time the technology's advanced quite a bit in 20 years as you replace that unit, and they become more and more efficient. Set point adjustments. Over the years, we've slowly adjusted those set points. Right now, our buildings are set at 68 degrees in the winter, 74 in the summer. We have water meter separation. What that is, is if you take the food production facility, for example, their cooling tower would be put on a separate meter, because just like your house, your sewer bill is based on how much your water usage is, even if it's not going down the sewer. So, buildings like that, that have a large heating and cooling or refrigeration system, or secondary fields, or the DAX for the irrigation systems, we put those on a separate meter so that we can avoid that additional sewer cost. The M-Power program is a program started or offered by KCPN-L. I believe we joined about three years ago. It's a three-year contract. We're paid $60,000 a year for KCPN-L to call us with one day's notice and ask us to lower our energy consumption. That's usually in off-peak times for us, like the summer. We receive the $60,000, and if we achieve by site what they, when they call us with a day's notice where they want us to be, we get an additional roughly $5,000 a site. There's only been one time we have not been able to achieve that, and there's kind of a penalty that comes off of that $60,000 if you can't. But generally, it's middle of summer, buildings are unoccupied, and we're able to adjust pretty well and achieve those savings. Energy Star program, I want to qualify that a little bit. I said 35 award winners. We really have 15 award winners and 35 that would be eligible. It's sort of like the LEED certificate. We don't want to spend the money to actually get the award anymore, so we just, we apply the criteria ourselves. And what that program shows is if you achieve the top 25 percentile in energy use across the country, you would be an award winner. So, what that speaks to is that 35 of our buildings are in that upper echelon, one of them being 90 percentile, which would mean only 10% of the district's schools do better than them. We also have scheduled technology shutdowns. Every night at 8:00, our system shuts down. It goes out through the IP addresses and shuts any computer that was left on on a desktop and turns it off to save the energy costs. When you bundle all those activities together, we've achieved some pretty significant savings. It's a hard thing to measure. We're a growing district. You've got different rates every year, and you've got different things called degree days. Is it hotter last year or colder this year? What was it? So, what this graph shows is our electrical usage. The program started in '91. Since 1991, we've grown to 126% in square footage. We've more than doubled in size. However, across that spectrum, our electrical usage, not cost, has only gone up 47%. Intuitively, that means you're saving about 50% on electric usage through all the initiatives that have gone on. In the gas realm, same growth of 126% square footage-wise, but we're only up about 13% on gas. A little more volatile, as you can imagine, this year. That little gray line tailing off is because, as you can tell, it's 65 degrees today, so we are well below our estimates this year on gas consumption. Second leg of that stool is our maintenance construction areas. And the way we try to achieve efficiencies and energy conservation there is through the application of some LEED strategies or concepts. When we build a new building, we really strive for high-performance building skins. You know, we want high R-ratings in our walls, windows, roofs, high-efficiency PMZ rooftops. These are like your home system bundled together, like you take six home air conditioners, bundle them together inside one unit. And we're utilizing those a lot in our new construction, together with an energy recovery system. And I'm fairly lucky, because I'm going to probably mess this up, but Mr. Polan isn't here right now. But basically, the way that energy system works is there's a wheel or a set of coils, and the warmer that's coming out of your building passes by that wheel, warms that wheel up or that coil, and exchanges that energy over to the cold air that's coming in that you're exchanging it with, so it pre-treats the air before it gets into your system, and you don't have to use as much energy to get it heated up or cooled down in the summer. We avoid use of some of the more dangerous gases that used to be popular, like halon gas. It's more known for fire suppression systems. You probably hear about it in IT shops where they need to get the oxygen out of the room. Two initiatives, construction waste recycling and recycled construction materials. We look for construction managers that are certified LEED. We understand they know how to apply recycling methodologies on the site. And we also call out in our construction contracts some percentage of use of recycled materials. Fresh air intake, the more traditional method to figure out when should you exchange that air, it's getting kind of stale in here, is really kind of on a mathematical formula on an hourly basis. We do it more on an occupancy basis. If it's a large meeting room and there's nobody in there, it doesn't need to exchange the air. So, as the CO2 goes up from us being in this room, then the air exchangers come in, so it conserves the energy when vacant. We use low VOC content materials. Best way to talk about VOCs is like epoxies and things that you put down on a floor in construction to put the tile down or to adhere the carpet. Even some carpets have a little bit of them in there, but we try to avoid those materials. Low-flow restroom fixtures, pretty self-explanatory. That's been talked about a long time, even in homes. Motion detector-controlled lighting. Obviously, if the room's empty, the lights automatically turn on if somebody comes in. Honestly, that takes a lot of tweaking as we put those in our sites, because a real sunny day can, you know, clouds passing by on a sunny day can kind of trigger that. So, over the years, that's gotten a lot better technology. And I mentioned alternative energies, but really, this is kind of a pilot or demo-type thing. In our district, we have solar panel and wind turbine up at Seaback, and it powers some small equipment like the pop machine, just more of an experimental use to see as that comes down in cost, what applications do we have. And finally, in maintaining our buildings, we always go for green seal products as much as possible, as long as they are financially responsible. We don't want to go too over price to achieve that. But the good news is, a lot of our products have that seal, and we use a lot of 100% recycled papers. The biggest inroad that we can make is through our individual behavior, and that's kind of two-pronged. And the first is the whole idea of reducing your carbon footprint. What's that all about? It's just reducing the amount of greenhouse gases, like how much CO2 you create in the environment. It's not about what we do, like the first one, our copier-printer default settings, that's not creating CO2. What creates the CO2 is the production of paper that we're using. And then, if we use too much paper, that mill's got to run, and therefore, it's affecting the environment. We set all of our copiers and printers to do two-sided copying. You have to override the controls to get a single copy out. We push more and more paperless communications. W2s available online, handbooks online, try and wean off of the paper usage. About 2007, we started establishing idle-free zones. Idle-free zones are, you see signs at some of the kids' schools asking you to, it's not hard these days to get people to turn off their car while they're waiting for their child with the price of gas, but it helps the ozone quite a bit. And once again, just educating people about alternative energies and maybe some possible uses in our facilities. The other side of that is the whole recycling effort. In the recycling effort, we have, across our schools, there are cellphone and inkjet collection bins where those types of devices are turned in. We have compostable cafeteria trays, these little cardboard trays, which was a program that was started on a grant, mainly across the 15 schools, Olathe South and its feeders, plus Woodland. That was a one-year grant that got the program initiated. That's now been absorbed into the Food Services Department's budget. The cost of the trays, we found a source that's brought them down considerably to make that much more manageable. Bringing an elementary online is about $500 to get into that program. Those trays replace the styrofoam that was normally thrown into the trash can. They get pushed into what looks like one of the lawn bags that you might use, and they go to the recycling dumpster. We have a joint venture with the City of Olathe for cardboard recycling. We receive the dumpsters for free. We collect all the cardboard, and that also would go intuitively to reduce our trash bill, depending on if we've grown at that school and we need another pickup or not. But definitely, it's a nice partnership that we're not having to pay for that dumpster. And then we have student-based initiatives across the district. We have a variety of programs. Usually, it seems to center around the fourth grade at the elementary levels, where the kids collect at least once a week all of the recycled paper that's in all those bins that you find in the corner of our buildings, or all the aluminum cans, and they kind of march out to the recycling dumpster, and it just really goes to create that culture. At the middle level, there's more energy conservation, about power lights-off programs that when kids are not in those labs, they're last went out, turn those off. And at the high school, there's a lot of video production projects going on about trying to teach their fellow classmates about recycling efforts at Olathe South. Really, this has been growing over, it's been growing over 20 years, and it's getting hard to find new and better ways, but we just kind of keep at it. The good news is, it's sustainable in our district, because it's been part of our culture so long, that the kids just know to do it. Some of those kids are now parents, and it's just the cycle started. And one of our next steps is really kind of spreading the word, and we're not having to try to do that. Some of our neighboring district schools are coming over and asking our schools, how have you initiated these programs to where it's so widespread in your schools? We really want to look at the expanded use of any alternative energies that we can, the solar and the wind power, as those costs come down. Right now, they're fairly cost-prohibitive for us to look at. And we want to neutralize any financial impact through grant-based initiatives. We just came in contact with a group that we can initiate two more elementaries on the compostable trays program because of a grant, so we'll be able to get two more schools in and kind of ease that in. So, we're always looking for those things. The good news is that, I know the board was probably concerned when Bob Courtney retired, you know, is this program not going to get its due attention? But Chris Grollups doing a great job on that front-end analysis piece and running the energy program. And it's really a team effort between Tom Lilis and Greg Thomason and Chris. If it's new construction, what do we need to do? Chris telling them kind of what he's seen in different sites, and they collaborate and try and figure out any changes that can be made as capital improvements are initiated. Couple other programs to mention that I had left out of the presentation, kind of in the realm of recycling, is we have an e-waste program, which when we buy large amounts of new technology, and we have old technology that we have to get rid of, written into those agreements is that the vendor we're buying from will pay for a company to come scrub the hard drive clean, take that device off, and recycle it for maybe an underprivileged family, set up a shop that they can sell at very inexpensively, old technology, but it'll help somebody get into the technology. That's a lot of labor if we had to grab 1,000 units of something and get all of that proprietary stuff off of there and try and find a place to go with those computers. So, that's another nice program. In the textbook realm, once we're done with the textbook, we try to sell it back to a reseller, make it available to another nonprofit educational institution before we even try the recycling route with it. And then, just yard and waste clippings. We don't do a lot of grass clipping collection, other than at the DAX, but there's compost areas at each of those facilities. And also, if we have larger limbs, we have mulchers that we grind it up and take it to the city's composting area. With that, I'd entertain any questions.
Any board members have questions for Mr. Hutchison?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. At one of the previous board meetings, I'm going to put you on the spot here, that, you know, all these efforts that you've got to fine-tune to the point where, I think one time you mentioned, you know, just changing the temperature in all the facilities made a huge impact on the expense. And do you remember what that number was? I was thinking it was a quite a large number.
I don't. I asked right before the meeting, and we didn't have it at our fingertips. So, I apologize. I'd be happy to get that for you, because I wanted to be able to quote that. I can't recall exactly how much it was.
It was a substantial number, though, by just changing things just one degree. But the important part of that is, is just being able, you know, with the technology and everything else we have today, you can fine-tune it into that, and just one little change can make a huge difference. But it's important to keep track of all those, and that's what adds all this together. So, great job.
Great report. Thank you for that information.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Hutchison. First one, is there any way that you can quantify the dollar savings that the district has saved in one year based on our energy conservation efforts?
Not really, because of, here's why. I can look at the usage, but we'd have to figure out the degree days for comparable days, so what was December 15th like last year? So, account for the change in what the weather did. Then we have to figure out what was the rate. So, I could try to back into something like that, but it's really hard when you start converting these degree days. That's why we try to center, focus in on usage, that if we feel we're successful, if we can get the usage down from year to year per square foot.
It would be nice for the public to be able to quantify that into a dollar number, because every dollar that we save on the energy side's an extra dollar that we can put in a classroom.
And I would point to that $20 million, then, because that, had you not done anything in 1991, and we would turn our head to any kind of conservation, we would be utilizing over 60, almost 70% more energy today per square foot.
How much do we spend a year on energy now, about?
I'm going to defer to Chris and see if he knows off the top of his head.
For electricity and gas, district-wide?
For electricity and gas, district-wide, we spend about $4.5 million.
Okay, so if we doubled that, we'd be at eight and a half, so $4 million. That's a lot of classroom resources. Okay. So, that would be good for our public to understand that. Same question in regards to our green seal efforts. You know, I know that whatever we try to do, we make sure that it doesn't have a, it has a positive fiscal impact rather than a negative fiscal impact. Is there any way to quantify that as well?
Not that I'm aware of. We could do, pick some per-unit prices, but otherwise, it's dependent, once again, on what are you using that year? If you've just switched to some method of cleaning a floor, more square footage, but I'd be happy to get some sample products and line those up.
But basically, it's either revenue-neutral or saving us money. It's not any more expensive to use some environmentally sound products rather than using products that would not be considered environmentally sound.
Relatively neutral.
We could safely say it is revenue-neutral.
Yes.
But it's still be being responsible from an ecological standpoint.
Correct.
Alright, understood. I think that's important for our public to know as well, that we're not being green, and it's costing us more money to use these types of products rather than something traditional, but it's still, it doesn't cost us anymore.
No.
Alright. And back on the compostable trays, I think you kind of answered that. I know it started at South and the feeder schools through the grant program a few years back. We've been able to expand it to other schools?
We are on the process of expanding to two more schools right now.
So, would that, do you know totally how many that would be then?
Are we only at 17, Chris?
We're 15 now.
15 now, going to 17.
15, so 17. So, what are our chances of getting it? Apparently, it's a program, a project that we need to continue pursuing. What are our options in regards to expanding at a more rapid pace?
Generally, it's availability of grant dollars.
It costs $500 to start it at a school?
Correct.
That's it?
Is that an annual?
For the food production side, then each site in their budget buys the bags, a little less of a cost that all of those trays go into. So, there's kind of a, the building also has to be willing to share in that project.
So, that's an annual cost?
It is.
To the building?
So, where did the two grants come from? Do you know?
The original grant, I don't know where that came from.
I think it came from the state.
Yeah, they were, the one that we could be applying for now is a state grant from the State Department of Wildlife and Environment.
Okay, thank you. And one more. Our recycling efforts with the city, from the cardboard standpoint, again, I don't want to beat this up, but it's important for, in this day and age, especially we know where our revenue's at. Any way to quantify that in regards to how much money that would save the district in order to be cooperating with the city in that kind of a project? What does that do for us from a dollar standpoint?
We are saving the rental of the dumpster and the dumping of that dumpster. I do not have that quantified this evening.
But we know it's saving money.
Yes.
Alright, I think that's the important thing for us to understand. So, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Let me ask about the M-Power.
Yes.
Where we get the 24-hour notice?
Yes.
Can that be handled? Is it centrally handled, or do we have to, when we have to?
Centrally.
Okay. You understood what I was going to ask.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Perfect.
I guess I had a question about the cafeteria trays. The grants that we've received in the 15 schools where we already have the program, are those ongoing grants to fund the purchase of those trays?
No, they were one year, and that's why it was so important to find a new source in tray that was much more inexpensive, because I don't know, I know it was much more to get into these programs than it is now, than the $500 that it is now. That's where it became more of a shared cost, that food production would supply the trays, the buildings would supply the bag that they go into, because it wouldn't be as huge of an impact on their budgets.
Okay, thank you. I just wasn't clear on that.
I just had one more comment. I appreciated the comment that you made in regards to the continuation of the energy conservation program. Mr. Courtney had been with the district a long time and had done a wonderful job, and I believe he was honored for the energy efforts that he had done in the district, as well as Mr. Houghton. I know Mr. Houghton always talked about, you know, when we would replace an air conditioning unit, he'd talk about energy efficiency and our payback on that. So, it's good to hear that this program is still continuing on, and that you and your team are carrying on in a great fashion, making sure that we continue the good work that's been done in the past by Mr. Houghton and Mr. Courtney. So, thank you very much for that. Next on the agenda this evening is another presentation to the board. For the benefit of our scouts, every month, we hear presentations from various departments within the district, so we can understand what's going on in these departments. You just heard about the energy conservation efforts, as well as teaching and learning. And now, we're going to get a report from our staff in regards to early childhood education. And again, this was at the request of Ms. Felter, I believe, asked for this report. So, thank you very much for preparing it, and we look forward to hearing about all the good things that are going on in early childhood in Olathe.
For those young learners.
I'd say why it's really important that we do this to start with.
Yeah, very good. And we are going to talk a little bit about education, early childhood education, and how we service our students here in the Olathe Public Schools. Certainly, we could start off with the research on early childhood education, and all of us are very familiar with that, how important it is for growth and development and getting students at a young age, and what we can do for an impact by age, by the three years of age, the brain is 80% of its adult size, those kind of figures that we look in all the research. Certainly, looking at that we can impact early challenges for students, and we can help to eliminate or reduce those early challenges, and certainly allows us to start with some early intervention for students who might be having some challenges related to their learning. We can also talk about the benefits of early childhood education, and this is really from the literature, 11 points that are on the slide there. But, you know, really, we, our mission is, of course, academic achievement. And so, you can see the very first one of the benefits, of course, is for academic achievement, and that's very important to us. Another benefit that you see on that list is lowering the incidence of absenteeism, and how important that is, because we know that the students that are at school tend to achieve better because they're at school. And of course, we won't talk about how important it is as an employer to be able to have individuals who are at work. And certainly, another area that we might talk about is positive behavior, and that we are able to garner from young learners how important positive behavior is. And there was one other one I wanted to draw your attention, and that's the fourth one in the first column, increases a positive approach to elementary education, helps make students and their parents much more connected to education, and that's very positive for us as well. Well, this evening, we're going to talk about several areas and several programs in early childhood. There's going to be four individuals that are going to help me with that presentation. The first one we're going to talk a little bit about is Parents' Teacher Program. And Nancy Keel, our coordinator of the Olathe PAT, is going to present some information on that, a little brief information. Carol Affholder, who is our Director of Early Childhood Programs and Special Services, she helps with our Harmony Early Learning Center, as well as Heartland Early Learning Center. She's going to talk a little bit about infant toddler services and child find, even though infant toddler isn't totally operated by our school district, but she's going to talk about the relationship there. She's going to talk about early childhood disability programs in our special services area. And she's also going to talk about a program that we call ECHO, and you'll hear a little bit more about that. And then, we have a wonderful opportunity that we're going to hear from Kim Sills, who's going to talk to us about Head Start program, and just a little slot, one slide, on the four-year-old at-risk program. And then, Dr. Jan Hyden, who has taken over some leadership and administrative support of early childhood, is going to kind of tie us up in the end. One of the things that we are not going to speak about is universal preschool, because as a school district, we do not offer universal preschool. That certainly has an opportunity in our community. We have many daycares and preschools operating in our community, but as a district, we do not provide a universal preschool. So, we always like to make that clear. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nancy Keel, who's going to talk about early childhood, Parents' Teacher.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. The purpose of the Parents' Teachers Program is to provide our services to families with children prenatal to 36 months of age, to expand their parenting experiences, their engagement in parenting, and to get kids ready for school. We have been doing this for the past 23 years in Olathe. In the past five years, we have added services to our English and Spanish-speaking childcare providers with children birth to kindergarten entry. providers with children birth to kindergarten entry. As you can see, our funds come from a variety of important services. We work with any family interested in their child's development and education with an emphasis on English language learners and economically disadvantaged parents, teen parents in all of our high schools and middle schools, and parent, and parents of first, and first-time parents. These high-needs categories have reached 48% of all of our families. Our most popular service is our in-home personal visits, where we discuss development, parent-child interaction, parenting and family well-being concerning the parents at that visit. Last year, with personal visits, we served 1,063 families. The waiting list families are a part of our center-based program. Parents come to our centers at North Lindenwood Support Center or an elementary school to receive services, which you will see listed in the remainder of this slide. One of these services is screening. This is done annually with all of our children in personal visits, and parents are also come into our centers to have this completed. This is one of the most important services that we provide as we look at children and where, how they are doing and what they need next. All of our home visiting families also are invited to all of the services that you see up there that are conducted at our centers. And thank you very much. One of the services that our district provides is, excuse me?
Could you introduce yourself, please, for the public?
Sure, I'm Carol Affholder, I'm the Early Childhood Special Services Administrator.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For the viewing audience, thank you.
Okay, thank you. One of the district services that we provide is a mandated opportunity for what we call Child Find, and it ranges for, for this particular point, for ages three to five. It is a service that we offer every Friday, either at Heartland or Harmony, so anyone from the public who has a child in that age can call up and make an appointment to get a screening. Last year, we had 506 children come through our process, and we had, I believe, out of those, about 380 actually qualified for some type of services. So our rate of identification is pretty high when it comes to finding children in need of services. Another opportunity that we have to partner with the birth-to-three population is an organization called Infant Toddler Services. They are the equivalent of special education for the birth-to-three, and we have 269 children currently on our roster from ages birth-to-three. We typically transition about, between 150 to 200 students a year from all types of speech-only services to classroom, so we partner with them to try to have a transition visit and get them ready to come to the school-age environment. One of our early childhood programs is called Early Childhood Career Opportunities Echo. It is a vocational technical program, and it's a place for high school students to learn how to work with preschoolers. And we have two locations at Heartland and Harmony, where we offer the high school students from all four high schools come, and we average about 25 to 29 high school students a year that are part of that vocational program. And our Early Childhood Disabilities Program is the largest in the district. We have 33 classrooms. It is a mandated program for providing intervention services for children age three to five. Within this program, we have typically developing children that we refer to as peers, and our philosophy or makeup of the classroom is to have 50% peers from the community, which is a fee-based program, and 50% kids identified in need of services. We have a district adopted curriculum, and we have enrollment throughout the school year, so we have, as kids turn three years old, or as they are found through the Child Find process, we place kids all year long. So you might see the enrollment increase throughout the year. We have some specialty programs. We have an early childhood autism classroom, we have three located in, across the district, and we have an early childhood deaf and hard-of-hearing program that meets the unique needs of those types of students. Again, we have 33 early childhood classrooms, that's in 19 elementary buildings and the two early childhood centers. We currently have over 656 students, that changes on a daily basis as we staff kids in, and 291 students identified with special needs and 365 peers.
Ms. Affholder, what are peers?
Peers, typically developing children from the community.
Ah, got it, okay.
And that's the fee-based program. We, from time to time, we have a growth spurt. We haven't had a growth spurt in the last couple of years, but we were, when sixth grade were, was in the building, we often had an issue with space of, the building's growing large, and we had to think about moving classrooms, so that is the challenge for our classrooms. We at all times try to maintain a 50/50 ratio of typically developing peers to kids identified in need of services, and we continue to have a high-quality staff that, that really stays with our program.
So does that mean that throughout the year, you enroll the peers as well?
We do, as spots become available. If a peer moves, or for whatever reason, not able to attend, sometimes they change daycares and they're not able to get to the location. We do add peers throughout the year.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Kim Sill, and I'm the Head Start Director, and I also support the Four-Year-Old At-Risk Program. Tonight, I want to talk a little bit about both of those programs. Head Start is a preschool program that's designed for low-income children and families. It is federally funded, and we do focus on getting children ready for kindergarten.
What did I do?
Looking this one, but, there we go.
Middle?
This is the right one.
Head Start focuses on the whole child, so we look at how they, they're developing intellectually, emotionally, physically, and socially. We partner with the families as well, so we have a really large piece of our program that works with the families. We look at literacy and language, that's very important in our program as well, and again, like I said, we are very focused on school readiness and getting children ready to go on to kindergarten. Head Start offers the child social interactions, health and nutrition, we do vision and dental screenings on our children, we also work with the family. Families have opportunities to come in and volunteer and learn from the teachers, because we really believe that parents are their, their child's first teacher and most important teacher. We have lots of opportunities for parents to develop leadership skills. They come to policy council meetings and help us make decisions about our program, and they're able to plan and have input into the things that we do in our classrooms. We also offer transportation services, which are very important, and the school district supports Head Start 100% with that. Who's eligible for Head Start? Children in Head Start have to be three or four years old, and they also must meet the federal poverty guidelines. An example of the guidelines would be a family of four could not make more than $23,050. We also serve children with special needs, 10% of our population is mandated to be children that are identified with special needs. And of course, families must live within our service area. And we do serve more than just the Olathe School District, we serve Olathe, Gardner-Edgerton, and those are the two districts that we have centers in, but we also serve children in Blue Valley, DeSoto, Spring Hill, and I think that's it, yeah, that's it. So those children are transported in by parents if we do have children from those, those The next program that I want to visit with you about tonight is our Four-Year-Old At-Risk Program, and it, again, is serving children that are at risk, and they are needing more skills to help get them ready for kindergarten. Who's eligible for this program are children that are at risk, but the at-risk factor is not just poverty. We may have families that are single parents, they may be ELL students, they may be a teen parent, a parent that's lacking a GED or high school diploma may also qualify. This program is funded by the state of Kansas. We serve 72 students right now, we have a center at Harmony, and we have a center at Rolling Ridge. We are funded to serve by the state 60, we are serving an additional because there is a huge need, and that is the challenge with both of these programs are, that there are lots of children in our area that need the services, but we don't have enough slots because of funding. Head Start is the same way, we're funded for 149, and that's all we're funded for, and we can't go over, even though there's lots of kids out there we could possibly be serving.
Thank you for letting us share some information tonight. I'm Jan Hyden, I'm Director of Instructional Support Programs. We know that early childhood education is important. A Nobel Prize-winning economist, James Heckman, estimated it this way, that every dollar spent on early childhood education earns 10 cents annually for the life of the child. That's an interesting estimate of the, of the value of the programs we talked about And we also know that quality early childhood programs significantly increase the child's success, chances for success in school, leading to graduation from our system and success later in life, with, with a strong correlation. And again, thank you, and we would welcome any questions that, that you have for us tonight.
I have some comments, not necessarily questions, but I'll wait if you're smiling.
Go ahead, Dr. Daniels.
I knew it would be me. I can't stress how, how pleased I am with the quality of the early childhood services in our district. I have the opportunity and the position where I work at the, at the medical center to see families come from other school districts, and it's hard for me not to just sit and smirk about how great the services are in Olathe. And I want to make two different comments, and one is, I think there's research, I know there's research, not just for children with special needs, and, and the developmental progress they make in their younger years, and the fact that that costs us less as taxpayers in educating and providing services for those individuals throughout their lifetime, that's been replicated over and over. But the other piece for our children who are at risk because of low socioeconomic factors, there's some preseminal research out there that says those kids come to kindergarten with half the vocabulary as children who are from middle-class families, and they never recover. So their growth tracks are like that. So the work that we do with those kids before they go to kindergarten is what makes the difference in terms of them being successful and our district being successful. And so I, I think we need to applaud the district, because even though our budgets continue to be tightened, our administrators, our teachers, our taxpayers understand and value the impact that early childhood education has on the district, and so I applaud you and thank you very much.
Okay, I'm done ranting.
Very good, well-stated. Any other, any other comments on behalf of the board? Go ahead.
Oh, I've enjoyed seeing Kim work with the Head Start Policy Council, and seeing parents for the first time come in and learn how to run a meeting and make a motion in a second, and I mean, life-changing skills that potentially would have never been within their grasp, and it's, it's done well. I also learned that you don't take lollipops into the classroom when you go to read, because they teach nutrition in dentals. Yeah, that was, yeah, embarrassing, because I had already shown them to all the children, but it's, it's a life-changing program in and of itself, so. I've heard statistics, I was trying to average out what I had heard, but for every dollar invested in the age range here, that every, annually, it saves two, anything from the low end of $2.50 to $17 annually, which compounds over, you know?
A lifetime.
Mm-hmm, a whole lifetime, which sounds like not much, but it really adds up. So thank you guys for the presentation.
Any other comments? Dr. Bandikowski, thank you to you and your team for coming and making a wonderful presentation to us about the value importance of preschool and early childhood education, and this is good for our community to understand what great, what a great program we have here. Thank you.
We have a great staff, and that's what makes the difference.
That's what it's always all about. Our next program this evening, our next presentation this evening prior to our comfort break will be a presentation from Mr. Kalen Kendall, President of ONEA, and Ms. Erin Meyer about Read Across America.
NEA's Read Across America is an annual reading, motivation, and awareness program that calls for every child in every community to celebrate reading. I just have to tell you that Wearing This hat up here is way out of my comfort zone. I feel like I'm about to spontaneously combust. In May of 1997, a small reading task force at NEA came up with a big idea, an idea to create a day to celebrate reading. We hold pep rallies to get kids excited about football, we assemble to remember that character counts. Why don't we do something to get kids excited about reading? The task force called their new program, NEA's Read Across America, and decided to celebrate it on the birthday of beloved child author Theodore Geisel, also known as Dr. Seuss. And so it was born on March 2nd, 1998, the largest celebration of reading this country has ever seen. Motivating children to read is an important factor in student achievement and creating lifelong successful readers. Research has shown that children who are motivated and spend more time reading do better in school. I'm here tonight to introduce one of our outstanding teachers, winner of the Olathe Public Schools Foundation Educator Excellence Award, and someone who helps to expand the world of reading for a classroom of fifth graders every year, countryside elementary teacher Erin Meyer.
Erin Meyer, Countryside Elementary, 5th grade. The National Education Association founded Read Across America in 1997 to celebrate the birthday of Dr. Seuss and his contribution to the joy of literacy and learning, which is also one of the founding principles of the National Education Association. Olathe District Schools also shares in the same commitment to student learning and success in and out of the classroom. I would like to ask the Board of Education to come celebrate Read Across America on Friday, March 2nd, with Olathe's National Education Association. You're never too old, too wacky, too wild to pick up a book and read to a child. In our schools and community, let's all gather around and pick up a book and pass it around. There are children all around us who are in need of someone to care for them and someone to read. So share your favorite book in your own special way and celebrate Read Across America on March 2nd with Olathe, NEA.
Thank you, and I'm sure the board members will be invited to attend Read Across America at a certain school. Thank you very much for that. At that, we were, at the time of our agenda, where we'll take a comfort break, and this evening, we'll re-adjourn, we'll reconvene at 7:05, so everyone can enjoy the middle school art reception that is going on in the foyer, so 7:05, we'll come back. Good evening, and welcome to those who have just joined the board meeting, thank you for, for coming. This time in the agenda would be, we reserve for recognitions and awards. I'd like to introduce our Director of Communication, Mrs. Maggie Kahlb, and Ms. Rita Ashley will be the Board of Representative to congratulate those who are being recognized this evening. Ms. Kahlb?
Thank you, and we have numerous recognitions tonight, I'd like to welcome all of our distinguished guests. Our first recognition honors three high school groups who made waves in the Kansas City Science Community. Science City and Burnson-McDonald earlier this school year sponsored a Battle of the Brains competition for students in the Kansas City metro area. The competition was designed to inspire projects around science, technology, engineering, and math. Three Olathe student groups were named finalists in the competition out of 550 teams. Two teams from the 21st Century Environmental Design Program at Olathe East were in the top 10 for secondary teams, and each received a $2,500 grant. Both teams were led by instructors Lee Sappingfield and Barbara Nakumanech. In the first group, the Elements of Modern Living and Power Team included the following students, Dylan McCune, Amanda Yay, and Austin Ungerbuler. I'd like to ask all of you to come forward and be recognized, along with Bill Weber, Olathe East Principal. And the next, the next group from Olathe East who are in the top 10 had a project entitled the Magnetic Science and Technologies Exhibit. Those students include- the Magnetic Science and Technologies Exhibit. Those students include Jake Keller, Alex Bloom, and Sam Main. Congratulations to each of you. Thank you very much. It's very exciting to recognize the next group from the 21st Century Distinguished Scholars Science Program at Olathe North. Their entry unplugged was named the overall winner in the Battle of the Brains competition. They were awarded a $50,000 grant to support science, technology, engineering, and math education in their school. Would Connie Hein and Olathe North Principal, instructors Rhonda Rice and Amy Johnson, along with the following students, please come forward. Seniors John Hack, Eric Amarin, Ryan Luter, Alex Farrell, Michael Gogliano, Mike Holtz, Noah McCoy, Sunil Iyer, Levi Hogan, and juniors Kavya Shivishankar, Carly Brigman, Drew Broadbent, Sarah Kruger, Kendra Shude, Andrew Johansson, Sidney Kinsler, Michelle Perez, Morgan Adams, and Emily Johnson. In addition to the grant, Unplugged has been selected to be constructed as a new exhibit at Science City at Union Station. The exhibit will allow visitors to experience how energy powers the world through a number of interactive displays that demonstrate how mechanical power is transformed into various forms of energy. Congratulations on this wonderful accomplishment. We're so proud of you for your success. Thank you very much.
Great job. Good job.
Next, I'd like to recognize an Olathe Northwest student for recognitions she received in golf. Would Cassie Wong please come forward along with Jay Novacek, Olathe Northwest Athletic Director? Cassie was named the recipient of the Kenneth Smith Award for the Kansas City Metropolitan Area's Top High School Golfer. She was the Sunflower League Individual Champion and led Northwest to the Sunflower League Championship. Cassie was the Regional Champion and finished fourth at the Kansas State Tournament. She won six of seven tournaments she played in this season and she holds every individual golf record for the Olathe Northwest program. In addition, she received the Midwest PGA Junior Student Athlete of the Year. This award is given by the Professional Golfers Association and like the Kenneth Smith Award, it's based on golf, academics, community involvement, and leadership. Congratulations, Cassie, and all of your colleagues. And our final recognitions tonight honor teachers who recently worked toward national board certification or national board certification renewal. Three Olathe educators recently received this certification from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. National Board Certification is a professional achievement in which a candidate's teaching practice is measured against rigorous standards. It is a symbol of commitment to excellence in teaching. Forty-two current Olathe teachers have attained this distinction. I'd like to ask the following individuals to please come forward to be recognized for attaining national board certification. Lindsay Colling, International Language Teacher from Olathe East and District International Language Facilitator. Lisa Fromm, 5th grade teacher from Manchester Park Elementary. Deena Steen, 3rd grade teacher from Washington Elementary. In addition, I'd like to also ask the three teachers who went through the rigorous renewal process for the national board certification and are now certified for the next 10 years. Sandy Adams from Heatherstone Elementary.
Ames.
Ames. Sorry, Sandy. Kate Thompson from Olathe Northwest and Julie Miller from the district. And she couldn't be here with us tonight. Congratulations to all of our national board certification teachers. And thank you all. Congratulations. And that concludes our recognitions tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley and Maggie for the recognitions this evening. At this time in the agenda, we would, the board would take time for public comments. At each regular meeting of the Board of Education reserves time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect the privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded, for broadcast on the district educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and please state your name and address. At the time of the board meeting, we didn't have anyone who had requested to present to board this evening, but I'd leave the open invitation if anyone wanted to address the board this evening. Being done, then the board would move to our action items in our agenda. Our first action item this evening would be our consent agenda. Those are items that are routinely approved by the board by consent. They are approval of the minutes of the January 5 meeting, approval of the financial reports for February, approval of accounts repayable, human resources, and student trips. Board members have the opportunity to remove anything from the consent agenda that would like to, or I would call for a motion.
I would like to remove the human resources report.
Any other requests? Then, a motion, please.
I move to approve consent agenda items numbered 5.01, 5.02, 5.03, and 5.05 as presented. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Dr. Daniels for approval of 5.01, 02, 03, and 05. Ms. Hibbs?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
So then I would need a motion for 5.04, approval of human resources, February 2012, or discussion.
I'd like to discuss it, but I believe it probably needs to go to executive session for confidentiality reasons.
Can we adjourn to executive session because it's a matter for personnel matter?
Personnel.
Okay. I need a motion to move to executive session and a time limit.
I move that we go into executive session until eight, or 7:30, 15 minutes?
Okay.
I'll second it.
So the board would go into executive session for the purposes of discussing matters that are personnel and that is the board's privilege. So we will adjourn to executive session until 7:30. Call for, I have a motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Ms. Felter. Ms. Hibbs, call the roll, please.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
Ms. Hibbs, would you, Ms. Hibbs, would you record that the board is going to remain in executive session for another 15 minutes? Do you need a motion for that?
I think we do.
Okay. I need a motion for that, board? Second?
Who moved?
I have a motion by Dr. Daniels, a second by Ms. Ashley, that the board would remain in executive session until 8:45. All in favor? We'll do that. Call the roll, please. Call the roll.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
Ms. Hibbs, would you let the record show that the board returned to open session? Do we need a motion for that?
No.
Then I would take a motion in regards to item 5.04 on the consent agenda, which is the approval of human resources for February 2012.
Mr. Parker, I would move to approve the consent agenda item 5.04, approval of human resources as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Dr. Daniels for approval of consent agenda item 5.04 with a second by Mr. Sheer. Ms. Hibbs, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ashley?
No.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
No.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
No.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
We'll move to item 6.04 on the agenda now, which is the approval of action for bids, contraction agreements. We can take these three items as individual items or we can approve them as a group.
I think Mr. Hutchinson would be glad to make comments if you would like them on 6.03. If you want to separate that one out, the others are pretty standard bids.
Preference of the board?
I'd like to take them together to save time if we could.
I'd like to.
Okay, we'll take 6.01, 6.02. If I could have a motion for those two, please?
I move to approve items 6.01 and 6.02 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Mr. Poland for 6.01, 6.02. Ms. Hibbs?
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
6.03. Mr. Hutchinson?
I'd be happy to answer any questions, but just a quick recap. You know, this is the end of a very long process on the software selection process. At our last meeting, we had noted to the board that we intended on awarding to Sun Guard, had entered negotiations with them to fine-tune the contract. To recap what occurred there, a couple of real positive things, not to get too detailed, but there are, a lot of the customization or implementation of this software revolves around workflows. We had several of the workflows incorporated into the agreement at no additional cost. A real nice retention piece to the contract. Nowadays, it's kind of hard to get a 10% retention across the board. We have a 10% retention across the board throughout the contract on all the billing to make sure that rather than meeting milestones and releasing money, it's just will be like a construction contract, holding funds back throughout. And we locked in the second-year maintenance cost also, and then a variety of kind of minor pieces along the way in, as far as language goes and timing and when payments are due and those things. But I'd be happy to answer any specific questions.
Do you plan to start the implementation if this is approved?
We'll, I believe, be meeting, I think we have a call tomorrow to start planning them onsite to set up the timetables and get the teams together and the project manager in place. So we'll be starting immediately.
And the 18 months will start when?
Now.
Double books?
Now. We'll be.
Not double books, double.
I'm sorry.
For the 18 months, that will start immediately?
It will. Everything done no later than 24 months from now, all packages.
Then I would like to approve the contract with Sun Guard Public Sector as presented and not to exceed $2.1 million. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Ashley, a second by Ms. Martin. Ms. Hibbs?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Good luck, Mr. Hutchinson. Go.
We'll go to action item 7.01, which is Contract for Sale of Mill Creek Center. Dr. Barry?
Yeah, I'm pleased to be able to bring this one back to the board for consideration again tonight. Just to step back and give a little bit of a recap for those that haven't followed it for the number of years it's gone on. But there was a task force that initially studied the facilities and the program as part of our tech ed program. And out of that task force came one recommendation is that we should replace the facilities that are currently being, the program is being held at the old John P. St. John High School and the metal building back behind. In 2007, our community was supportive to pass the bond issue, which included funds sent for a new tech ed center. As you know, we've selected architect, it's been designed, and we have construction firm ready to go. And so we are getting close to breaking ground and starting on that. That building is slated to be completed in May of 2013. Because of then moving out of that building, we no longer need the use of John P. St. John. And so we had been approached a year ago by a company that was interested in making it a project to remodel for senior housing assisted living in downtown Olathe. They went to the state for funding and didn't receive that. And so it was kind of off the blocks, but that came back up again just very late November. They asked again if the board would be willing to consider an agreement to offer that for sale to Netgiver Incorporated. They are a Kansas City company that has made projects like this in the Kansas City area and other places as well. At our last meeting, the board was interested in not offering it in two phases like we originally did last year, a year ago, but wanted to see if we could work with the company to get them to make a commitment of one phase, which we have now done. The selling of land is done in open session by state statute, whereas when you buy land, you can do that in executive session. So we're doing us an open session tonight and we're bringing to you a sale price of 1.1 million for Mill Creek Center. Again, this is still contingent on the Netgiver going to the state. Their application is due tomorrow, but they go to the state and get, apply for state credits, historical credits and other credits. And so we will know, I think, by late April probably if this were to go. We are still able to use the metal building for our programs through May of 2013, which fills what we need out of that. It would be a simple agreement that we would just pay for the utilities that we use in our program in that particular building and nothing else, and not leasing the building back even. We just, they will let us use that. And so tonight, wanting to offer for your consideration the agreement that would offer Mill Creek for sale to Netgiver for 1.1 million pending their successful completion of the acquisition of state credits to help their project.
That would be for the entire site?
The entire site.
To include the metal building.
Yep. Dr. Barry, another historical factor was what was the appraisal that we originally had?
You know, the appraisals range from what the comparables might be, what your current use is, what the intended use is. And from that range of uses, it was about 1.1 literally to about 1.3 in that range.
Just wanted to establish that there was some basis for
Yes.
a figure that we had. I'd move to approve real estate contract for the sale of Mill Creek Center with the stipulation that the Board of Education has the right to approve a contract to include stipulated changes and with no financial obligation placed on the stipulated changes, and with no financial obligation placed on the school district.
I'll second.
Thank you. A motion by Mr. Poland, and with a second by Ms. Felter. Ms. Hibbs?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
7.02 in the agenda, it would be to set a special meeting date and time for a joint meeting with the city, Olathe City Council and Olathe Public Schools Board of Education on February 16th, which is the annual joint meeting between the city council and the Board of Education, for the purposes of discussing our cooperation on community issues.
I'd just like to make a quick appeal, if we're meeting this, to the public, to say if there's anything that they want us to discuss, please email any of us, board members.
Okay. Good suggestion.
And I'll move to approve Thursday, February 16th, 2012, for joint special meeting with the Olathe City Council and Olathe Public Schools Board of Education, with dinner starting at 6:00 PM, followed by a special meeting at 6:30 PM.
Second?
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Poland, and a second by Dr. Daniels. Ms. Hibbs?
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. 7.03 on the action items would be to set a year-end special meeting date and time to change our organizational meeting date. Dr. Barry, you want to discuss a little bit the thought process behind that? Thought process behind changing the date?
You bet. Two, two comments about each of those dates. The first one, obviously, the schools in Kansas by statute close out our fiscal year at the end of June, and so John Hutchinson and Business Department, you know, like to set a time that they can officially meet with you, that we think we're in a position to close out the books, although it technically takes place, obviously, for several days after that, but that's a year-end closeout meeting. Likewise, one of the first actions that you'll take in July will be to set the budget for the coming school year. That budget has to be published in the paper for two consecutive weeks, and then a hearing has to be held, and then it has to go, be approved by the board in August and go to the treasurer for certification. So to hit all of those timelines, in terms of how many days you have to allow between the, the publishing of that in the newspaper and holding the hearing, we actually need a couple more days, and so we are placing that date, asking for it July 17th instead of the 19th, and it's just the way the days fall and the papers now that we get, an Olathe paper for Wednesday and Saturday, so it makes options a little bit different for us. So that's why we have to ask for that. That's obviously not our regular meeting time. It is already pushed back to mid-July so that the staff can make preparations of the budget and have it ready.
So Thursday, so Tuesday, July 17th would be the regular July board meeting?
That's correct.
Okay.
I would move to approve Wednesday, June 27th, 2012, 6:00 PM is the date and time for the 2011-2012 end-of-year special meeting, and to change the 2012-2013 July organizational meeting date from Thursday, July 19th, 2012, to Tuesday, July 17th, 2012.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion by Dr. Daniels, and a second by Ms. Felter. Ms. Hibbs?
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
We have a long list of 15 future action items that the board will be taking action on at the upcoming March board meeting. Dr. Barry, would those all be on the March board meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
And if board members had any questions or wanted any information about that, certainly welcome to contact Dr. Barry in regards to your questions. Is there any one like to discuss anything, say anything particular from staff on the, on these items? Mr. Poland?
I'd just like to hear a little bit more about the 815 Apple iPad purchase. Just give us a nice rundown of, pardon?
I'll start by making some comments on that, just a little bit. Our technology steering committee and technology committee in the district knows that we've been behind the eight ball in terms of funding and having technology for our kids, but we just know it's time that we get into the tablet business and try and get some of these in the hands of staff and kids. And so we're trying to be a little bit creative to do that, but unfortunately, the way we're being creative to say is, you know, a small pilot of a few, and if you have it in your budget in your building, you can do this. So it's not real equitable right now, but we're working on that. But we're excited that what it will allow us to do is put some iPads into the hands of, again, staff and students, administrators as well. Most of the pilots that they looked at today, not approved yet, but most that they looked at today, ELL program, the applications for kids learning language are wonderful, our special ed populations, regular ed as well, whether it be social studies and things that they can do it in the, with it in the classroom, or communications programs, but there's a long list of a baby step into the tablet business to show that we can get some more technology in the hands of kids. So we're excited about this. You'll hear more about it, obviously, as a future agenda item, but we're taking small steps to get into this through a pilot program. They're, they're all around us, you just can't pick up the paper without seeing districts that are, you know, way ahead of us in terms of deploying one-on-one for entire class sections, or, or in some cases, schools, but we just don't have the financial means to do that right now.
What are some of the things that other school districts have done?
You know, I think you might have seen just recently a press release from Atchison School District in Atchison, Kansas, that is doing a one-to-one initiative with their entire student population. KCK is a district that we's, we have visited and spoken with a lot, that has had and continues to have an Apple laptop one-to-one initiative at their high schools, but they have, gosh, Connie Smith, can you help me out? How many iPads? A thousand?
Those should have 2,000.
2,000 iPads that they've deployed within the last 12 months. They have a, a lot of, of those in hands of regular ed, ESOL, special ed. Blue Valley has a lot in their district. I happened to see a, a report last night about a program at the Shawnee Mission School District. It was on the news, and it was a, a parent that had come in helping a child learning the English language, and they were working on an iPad on, on word and sound recognition. So like Dr. Barry said, you, you really can't go anywhere today that you don't find districts either getting into it in small doses like we hope to do, or going full-blown with it on one-to-one initiatives. So we think that our method is, is a gentle, easy investigative method to step into this, to see where we can go in the future if we have funding available.
I applaud our efforts for, you know, moving forward with this, and I just wanted to make sure that we got a little more press than just a future action item here.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Poland. Any other, any other questions in regards to the future action items? 7.9.01 is some information written reports, which generally is not discussed by the board, it's just for board information. Head Start Monthly Director's Report is one of the reports that we had this month, and we heard a great presentation from Head Start this evening as well. Topics for Discussion, 10.01. Board members have the opportunity to bring up topics for discussion that are not on the agenda, and I have one. I believe in the March board meeting, we'd be getting a presentation in regards to the Capitol Outlight, a discussion that we had back in December, I believe, and I know staff has been working with some various committees, bringing, synthesizing a, a report for the board.
Actually, the first report would have been the start of the year, when we asked for 90 days or whatever to?
Okay.
Walk the building, so, or 60 days.
Then we had, then we had the presentation. I think that the discussion then was that the staff would come back to the board with some kind of big picture items that we need to consider. I was thinking that rather than try to do that at the March board meeting, that we might have a special work session in March, in order for the board to spend more time on that, rather than at a board meeting, and just call out a special meeting for that. Board members? That would be my, that would be my suggestion.
You have an idea what the agenda would be?
Yeah, it would be the report that, that John has, that Mr. Hutchinson would have ready for us, in regards to everything that we talked about, and our next step would be probably at the April board meeting, then if we decide what we wanted to do with that and how we wanted to move forward with it.
So do you see the format of that meeting being more of a study session?
Absolutely. Would not, we'd not maybe make any decisions, it'd be a study session to look at. We have some really big issues that are a part of that. A building committee's heard some of that, I'm not sure if the finance committee has heard part of that, but I mean, we talked about bond issues, so I think it's important for the board to spend some time studying that.
I, I agree with you, I do think it's important, especially for the members like me, who are not on the building committee.
So it'd just be something that, outside of the, our March board meeting, where we could spend more time with that?
Yes.
And for board members who aren't on the finance committee.
Yeah.
Is, is using March imperative, I ask, only because of spring break, and I don't know how that impacts district people, but also any board members who would be using time to travel? I, I mean, I'm probably going to be pretty available, but I just didn't know if, if moving it back, moving it back to April is a problem, or what? I just bring that up as an issue.
What week is spring break week?
12th through the 16th, that's the Monday through Friday. We originally were offering the date of March 22nd for consideration.
Which would be the third Thursday of the month, which is typically our, our board study. We've kind of reserved that for special board meetings.
Doctor Daniels is in spring break at 8:00.
Okay, and so it could be later than that. Our concern was, the April meeting, I remember we looked it up, was it April 5th, maybe? And so if we waited to the third Thursday in April, it becomes the 19th, which gets late in the year for us to consider and make plans. So we could go later March before the April meeting. That would be fine with us.
I'm actually fine with the 22nd.
Which would be the 22nd of March would be. We're not taking action on that, I just want everybody to think about putting that, we'd make that an action item at the, at the March board meeting.
What time you thinking?
6, 6:30, and that really doesn't matter, what, whatever the board, whatever the preference of the board is. 6 o'clock. Maybe Cafe 233 could bring a light sandwich. All right. So that'll be an action item in March, then. 11.01, superintendent's comments? Dr. Barry?
Actually, actually, Dr., or Mr. Parker?
I'm sorry, I, yeah.
I have, I have one item.
I'm sorry.
I'm working with some individuals to bring a film to Olathe East on, on February 27th. The film's called The Race to Nowhere, and it, it addresses the issues, the pressures that are on a lot of our students to, to achieve, or in some cases, to overachieve. And the district is not presenting this film, but they are making their facilities available for it, and I wanted to make sure the public knew about it, and I believe they've arranged to show just a short, one or two-minute clip from the film to give the community an idea of, of what this film is about. The, the goal of the film is not to make any changes to the way we do things in our district, but it's really to start a conversation about the pressures that we do put on our kids.
I can't really remember the last time I had a chance to go in the backyard and just run around.
Schools, just so much pressure that every day I would wake up dreading it.
I'm afraid that our children are going to sue us for stealing their childhoods.
I would spend six hours a night on my homework.
You have to get into the top schools.
You have to take tests and do interviews.
It's gone way to the extreme.
We're all caught up in it.
In America, if you don't earn a lot of money, something went wrong.
The pressure comes from the colleges, from the parents, from the government, but it has to stop.
You have to do well now, so you can get into a good college.
Everyone expects us to be superheroes.
You have a fear from the parents, that my kid needs to be able to get a job.
How do you expect us to do well when you can't even make mistakes?
You're dedicating your whole life to your grades.
You have to be smart, and you have to be involved in the arts.
I have soccer practice every day, plus the homework on top of that.
Produce, produce, produce.
It's impossible.
I couldn't cope.
I've gone through bouts of depression, just because you feel so swamped.
I almost like had an emotional breakdown.
There have been six suicides in our school district.
Our students are pressured to perform. They're not necessarily pressured to learn deeply and conceptually.
So what is that going to mean, when we have a whole population of dentists and doctors who've been trained from a script?
Things that actually get our students to think are pushed aside.
These kids come to the table with this creativity and this love of learning. Let's just not take it out of them.
I think the United States really needs to rethink how we do schooling. The economic future of the country depends on our addressing this.
We need to redefine success for kids. It's gotta be something we do together, all of us as a society, almost as a movement.
Jobs need you to be a critical thinker, they need you to be a problem solver.
We need to really think, what does it take to produce a happy, motivated, creative human being?
Thank you for showing that, I appreciate it. I would also add that after the film's shown, there's going to be a panel discussion, we're going to have, I believe, a couple of our counselors there to answer questions about our AP classes and things like that. We'll also have a mental health professional, and we're attempting to get a college admissions person also to answer questions that people in the community might have. I think there will also be an opportunity to, you know, to give your email to, to continue in a dialogue about how we do this. However, if you do attend, you have to register online, the tickets are free, but you, you must register online, and so if anyone in the audience or listening to this tonight has any questions about that, my contact information is on the district website, and I would be happy to share that information with anyone who would like more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members have any topics for discussion this evening? Superintendent's comments, Dr. Barry?
I'm one that doesn't like to have my picture taken, but I didn't check with all of you about it, but the Communications Department has developed a new flyer for tonight. That's for board meetings, and it'll be at the back table for all of our board meetings. Gives a little bit of rundown in terms of what happens at a board meeting, executive session, and your district's a little bit about all of you on the back, so that's new from our Communications Department tonight, and it's a nice publication. We've not made the official, I think at a board meeting, to talk about a little bit of our administrative structure in the district, but we have announced that John Hutchinson's not only our chief financial operator, officer, but is now going to be our operations officer as well, leading that, which means we are not replacing our executive director from the service center that retired very early in the fall. So we've studied it for a while, and we've made that decision, we're not replacing that. So we didn't replace an assistant superintendent position this year, now this is the second central office administrator that we didn't replace, and so I wanted to share, also, it's timely because it came out from the state. They now list our expenditures for last year by percentage, by category. The state always does this every year for every district, and it has to be for last year, but it's now posted. But our general administration costs for the Olathe District are 0.51%, so half of 1% of our budget is spent on general administration costs, and the state average is 2.56%. So we're well below that. We don't have any neighbors that are less than double what we are, up to six times as much in terms of that. So again, it's just another way that we're coping a little bit to, to cut back, and everybody takes on a little bit more that way. Want to give a real quick legislative update, the governor's bill is finally now in, has come out in printed form, extremely long, but I want to mention the three parts of it, because it's going to be important in terms of what happens from here on out. The first part of the bill is the school finance part that freezes state funding at the current level, so basically, it is institutionalizing the cuts, and it's, it's turning now all future school funding, new school funding over to property tax increases. The second part is the career and technical ed provision, which includes the elimination of vocational waiting, and, and the key that we're, a piece that we're looking at and a lot of talk going on in the state, it requires that there's no program duplication, so I'm talking about vocational ed, no program duplication between high schools and post-secondary institutions within 30 miles of each other, and so that obviously comes into play for us. And the third part deals with teacher provisions mandating an evaluation system that's based on 50% on test scores, 40% on student and parent input, and 10% on service to the profession. It's important to talk about these three pieces because now it looks like this bill's going to be cut into three pieces and handled separately, so we'll watch all three of these as they come through the process. The other side of the aisle has also come out with a school finance plan, and both of these finance bills will be the topic of discussion in the Senate Ed Committee next week. Another big bill has come out that was released, so I'll give you a quick update on that, but it's a massive rewrite of the charter law, charter school law in Kansas. According to this, the bill would allow almost anyone to open a charter school, receive tax funds to operate it, and be exempt from any student learning accountability measures that the state currently requires of us. So again, we're going to take a look at that and watch that as it goes through. We mentioned the capital improvement plan, that's coming through, a lot of work being done by our staff in terms of subcommittees, and we'll look forward to reporting out to the board now if we can get that date set in late March. And then finally, would offer up, if you're looking for something to do in the next few days, you can see Tommy the Musical at Olathe East High School, a good production will be going on, you can see IATA at Olathe North, the musical being presented this weekend, and Saturday night, Blues and Barbecue at Olathe Northwest, jazz music and barbecue, and I believe Silent Auction and so forth. So my personal schedule is Tommy Friday night, the barbecue Saturday, and IATA Sunday afternoon. It's certainly options if people want to go to those things, it's great to see our kids perform.
Thank you, Dr. Barry, we appreciate the update and the information in regards to the musicals at the high schools this weekend. We would now go to agenda item 12.01, which would be adjourned to executive session. I believe that the board has a large amount of work to do this evening in executive session in addition to what we've already discussed, so I would need a motion that the board would be in executive session for one hour.
I move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel, to discuss matters relating to employer/employee negotiations, and that the board will return to the regular meeting at 9:20 PM in this room. Executive session is required in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed and to protect the district's right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public interest.
My second.
Thank you, I have a motion by Ms. Ashley and a second by Dr. Daniels. Ms. Hibbs.
Ms. Ashley.
Yes.
Dr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mrs. Felter.
Yes.
Mrs. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Pollan.
Yes.
Mr. Shear.
Yes.